Well, then you have to set out the meeting's hours.
Yeah, that'll be the start of the meeting. Sorry, Elliot. Okay, I did email out my journal to everyone this morning as we were recording, but there's a copy for everyone at your seat. My budget is on page thirty-seven, thirty-six and seven of your budget book. As you know, the clerk treasures offices were combined as a twenty-twenty budget, so that's where you'll find all of our projections. It's a pretty straightforward budget this year. All the salaries in the budget to reflect any contractual step increases, the cost of living raises. We are currently fully staffed. We have three full-time employees and one part-time employee. Focus for the coming years is on staff development and retention to ensure there's no turnover in your office. For anyone that doesn't know, we are responsible more for the day-to-day operations of the city. We strive to provide the most efficient service we can to the public while keeping up with the rest of the workload, including agendas, minutes for council boards, commissions, et cetera. For records management, I have lowered the overall budget amount for that. I have been able, this year, to retrieve quite a few boxes from our storage facility in Erie to begin disposing of records that have gone well past their retention life. So I have approached Jeff Lehman about finding storage options either here or at the Steel Street location for records so that we can store them without paying the rental fees, which is about five fifty a month, plus the cost of extracting those boxes. And it just makes for a very inefficient process when somebody's looking for a particular contract or file that might have been sent to that location. I did increase my travel and education budget just to allow for any potential trainings that could come up for Lea, who is my deputy registrar of vital statistics. More and more in-person trainings have been happening, and those are usually a little more local, I think, Hope and College is about the furthest out that they normally offer them, but I'd like to be able to send her if and when the time comes. So, those were the only really significant changes in the overall line items. Obviously, the postage budget was increased just in an effort to keep with the postal services increases. Everything else has kind of stayed about the same, just trying to account for a little inflation here and there. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but it's all I have for you.
I do have one question. I know you work hours on Wednesday and you're doing things a little bit different. How is that working out? Are you getting good feedback or you're having problems? And how is that in terms of managing the day-to-day?
It was actually, we've actually reopened full-time now that we've got our new hire is up and running on her own. So, once she was in a place where she was comfortable, we've been able to reopen to the four-thirty regular office hours. But it was immensely helpful in that transitional period. That hour-and-a-half difference, it was a big difference. It made a huge impact on, you know, we didn't have any overtime because we were able to balance and get out and get the work done without having to account for any comp time or overtime. So it was very helpful. Hopefully, we don't have to do it again.
So are you already at nine to four there?
I personally don't have any questions, so if no one else does. Just keep in mind if something comes up.
Oh, yeah.
We'll ask down the road.
Sure, absolutely.
Jen, is there any add for vacations for whatever leaves there might be?
There, yes, there is because I'm very fortunate to have a very flexible part-time staff member, who is a city retiree, who, when we're on vacation, she works five days a week versus her regular three just to account for lunch hours and things like that. The same with tax time. I did bump up my calculations for her salary to pay out her extra hours during January and February for tax collection.
Next on here is a susser.
It's going to be page thirty-four.
Basically, I have three full-time employees now, and we have the salaries and the bumps for their raises, and we have stationery and supplies and postage, and that's about it. No, we don't have postage. Does anybody have any questions about line?
It's the equipment request. Was that for the rebuild?
Yeah.
Where was that?
Second line. Didn't come through the executive line. So it's really the only thing that was put in that's taken out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
As we discussed last year as well.
Yeah.
No one has anything for you, Lisa?
Hey, that's good.
Thank you very much.
You guys are easy ones.
Yeah.
Not really easy.
Line's on twenty-eight and twenty-nine. The biggest changes I had in my next year's budget is the management agreements for the spring break, I kind of bought a little bit more. As of right now, KBS costs us about eighteen thousand dollars. So just a small little change there. Overall, you can see that Katie has been added, but of course, is offset by the upper funds. And we have a quest line for two thousand dollars for a new computer for caring our healthcare specials.
That's our equipment.
Yeah. That's technically capital.
We do know that we're going to be on the hunt for some other questions when we go through some other stuff besides just the controller.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Treasurer's budget.
Oh, yeah. The biggest change that I would like to bring up as well if I can is on the projection side. The big two of these things, that's going to be page twenty in your book. We've added two different things this year. It's called the FRV, or the Financial Reconstruction Board. It comes underneath the State Lead and Efficiency Grants. We're able to apply for that grant, or those funds, due to the healthcare savings. So we wanted to include that in our projection. The other one is the parking meters. We have decided as an executive group to increase the parking meters from twenty-five cents to fifty cents an hour, or sorry, fifty cents for thirty minutes for a dollar than an hour. And those are the big two changes in revenue projections. I wanted to bring it up last time, but we kind of kept going.
The second major change?
It was doubling the on-street parking meters. It went from one hundred and twenty-seven to two fifty-four. And we are slightly, we're going to be fine on this year, making that one seventy-four as well.
Do you have any expenses coming up for that?
So, when we did the healthcare savings, or the healthcare changes for the retirees and the people aging in, we've already accounted for three years of that. So that's how we're able to apply for. We're actually able to apply up to nine hundred and eighteen thousand, but I would like to stretch that over at least two years. So that's why I wanted to put it back in. And we're well within the time range to do that as well.
Any other questions? Is anybody?
No.
Okay. You have anything else?
I don't want to say.
Okay. It was easy for tonight. Information Services, next.
It's going to be page fifty-seven.
Okay, starting on fifty-seven. We'll start with salaries. Currently have myself and another technician, personal computer specialist who mainly functions out of the police department. So his salaries are reflected there. The one, I think you guys had the update on page fifty-eight, there was an additional personnel that I wanted to add, but that was not in there, but I think we got the changes. So, one of the main reasons I want to add a personal, another person, which we consider a network technician, is for cybersecurity needs and also network hardware software needs. And that person would basically be between the personal computer specialist and myself. One of the, a real big reason that I want to add this is that there's a lot of activity, a lot of technical needs in the city hall. And what's happening here is that many departments are kind of doing their own thing, taking it upon themselves to do IT. And that kind of leaves us out of the loop a little bit. And so, when we're asked sometimes, you know, about a certain piece of technology and we don't know anything about it, then we probably should have another person to help with that, if that's going to happen.
So, why are other departments taking it upon themselves to do IT? Shouldn't generally go through an AIIT department?
You would think, I don't know, I couldn't answer that exactly other than is it the fact that I'm not available at the moment and they can't wait? Or do they feel they can do it themselves? It's a really good question if I should figure that out.
So, I guess when I ask you that question, that leads to what you said you wanted another person for was for cybersecurity and safety things. Are we having issues with that? Out of curiosity. Overuse of inappropriate sites, overuse of things they shouldn't be in.
That is another level that takes time during the day for either me or the personal computer specialist. Is that has to be, unfortunately, it has to be looked at constantly just to make sure we keep everybody on task, not doing things that they shouldn't be doing, and monitoring it.
Do we do any type of phishing tests, emailing tests?
Yep, we do have a phishing test program. It's also part of our cybersecurity training. And...
If someone fails that, then what happens?
If someone fails that, then they get to take another...
Usually the longer test?
Another smaller, actually. Less time spent training session. But every month this happens, so, I mean, they could take up to twelve more trainings. The training does get recycled out because if people fail multiple times, they're just going to be taking the same session. So, we change it every other month, so there's something different in there. Hopefully, they could learn. So move on. For equipment, we have forty thousand five hundred dollars requested for, one, a laptop. So, the IT department currently has a seven-year-old laptop that we could no longer upgrade. We can upgrade it to Windows eleven because it can't handle it. So, we're requesting just a replacement. We also currently have a server that provides internal backup to all our other servers, and it also serves as our fleet management software server. And that is a six-year-old server where it probably should be replaced because servers usually don't last that long. So we're just kind of biding our time on that. The next one is to replace some of our Cisco switches. We currently have twenty-two network switches in the building. Therefore, in order for any or all the computers to communicate, those switches have to be up and running. If one goes down, the whole building doesn't go down, but that section of the building will go down. So, we do have one spare, so hopefully, only one would go down. We could fulfill that. But we're trying to phase them out slowly for you within a three-year period. So request you four more switches. So thirteen of the switches are, have reached end-of-life according to Cisco. Therefore, if they don't replace those with the same hardware, you would have to purchase a brand-new one if it should fail. The last one on the equipment to capital is WinPAC software upgrade. So our FOB system that controls all the doors to the building, including the outside doors, run on this software called WinPAC. And it has to, it should be upgraded because if we ever have to add a panel, the panels control every door. So, if a panel should fail and we have to replace it, the current software will not be able to handle the communication between the panel and the door. So, it's inevitable that that will have to be replaced. Let's move on to maintenance agreements. The first one on the list is a brand-new maintenance agreement. We haven't even purchased this yet. We're hoping to purchase it. Currently, we provide remote access software to individuals who have to or need to work off-site. And we currently run, we currently offer software that is no longer supported. It's a security risk to the city, and it needs to be replaced. So, I'm proposing this remote software called Beyond Trust. This software provides high encryption. And one of the, I think one of the biggest assets to it is it provides login and screen recording. And what that would offer is recording of every individual who remotes in. It would record every session that would allow us to keep individuals on task, let's say, working remotely. Besides that, we have typical digital certificates for our servers that offers encryption for email and also any web activity. The renewal of Jamestone NY.gov domain is on the list. Another big item on the list here is our disaster recovery server. That server provides onsite and, more importantly, off-site functionality. So, if forever, if ever the city loses, you know, worst-case scenario, the city's gone, tornado, punch, or whatever, we will have access to those servers within a few hours. Anywhere, anywhere in the world that we shall have another building to provide. So that's very important. The Veeam Backup Software is our onsite software that we use for backup. And again, that would be installed on our replacement backup server under equipment. A new item that we added this year is our PDQ Inventory Deployment Software. So what that allows us to do is inventory every system on the network from a central location and push out any new software to these locations. And in essence, it actually helps for, you don't need another body to go around putting the stuff on workstations. So, it's very good piece of software. The next one is our Cisco Duo Multi-Factor Authentication. It's, according to the cyber insurance, that's, we have to have that. Otherwise, we don't have insurance. So, that's on that. Our SonicAll Renewal is basically for a firewall that communicates with the Spring Street ramp, not really the ramp. There's an office over there that we provide building maintenance and the heating and cooling over there provides access to that. Our Sophos, one of the big items again, is our Sophos Entavirus and MTR Renewal. So again, every computer that's on our network has the Sophos Entavirus. And the MTR provides twenty-four-seven coverage of any viruses or cyber activity. And I will add that this morning, there was a botnet, a good kind of botnet activity on it from the firewall, so it never allowed that to enter our system, which is very important. It's one of the first times I've seen it. You know, I check it every day, that it captured it and stopped it from coming in. Always the important, the ones that could basically destroy your network. I mean, there's other little viruses and little malware things that it finds, which, you know, could eventually destroy our system, but the botnet is definitely one that could, from the get-go, take care of our system. Since we want to upgrade to the WinPAC software, there's now a maintenance renewal fee every year for that. It's just something they started. We haven't had that with our current software, which is WinPAC, but the company has now, in order for the, in order for the product to function year-to-year, it's a renewal. And then, last but not least, on the maintenance agreement is the NOB4 Phishing/Cyber Training. I think it's very important. It's a teaching tool, and it provides us the ability to realize what's phishing and what isn't. And then the last one is the training online. We have online training for me and my coworker. No travel. It's just a subscription that we utilize monthly. With that, are there any questions?
Did you say that the training would be for those services, that would be off-site?
It is, there is an off-site option to it. It's an onsite/offsite.
Okay.
So, again, if the city was wiped out, you'd be able to utilize that. It's also where the building to go to.
Is that a recharge or?
That's an annual fee.
Please, Daniel, please, don't surprise me to be safe now, but...
It's pretty much just like insurance.
Yeah.
Hope you never need it, but...
And I, we got an email, and I saw it briefly too, thank you, about you're going to do some research on the NOB4. Or not the NOB4, sorry, the...
On the spring book.
Spring book?
Correct. We recently moved the fire department to New World Software, and that was something I was involved in heavily, and it took months to compare software vendors. We just wanted to make sure we got it right, and, you know, we're just going to have to pay our money to be able to get the correct software in.
No, I truly appreciate that. Now, Elliot, I didn't give you where you found that it was not necessary to have the RFP for that.
For a spring book?
I thought we had to because it's not a renewal. So, if you could just validate that as well before Mark spends all his time on one particular program. Anybody have any particular questions?
Mark, for all that your department does, you only have two people.
Yep.
Correct. For this magnitude of internet and IT and the size of the city and all the folks online, I just... So this magnitude of internet and IT and the size of the city and all the folks online, I just, a good job.
I appreciate it going.
And I would be proud of having you increase your staff.
I have concerns with other departments doing their own IT stuff. So I think that's something we need, we'll probably need to talk a little bit more about.
Yes.
This was a lot of information for everybody to ingest quickly, so. You may get asked back to.
If I do get one back, I'll come back.
There's always email.
Right, there's that too.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
We still haven't out yet.
All right, Elliot, is my name still new? Yes. I'm not asking for anything new, different than last year, if I'd asked for a new position, but I, my department consists of five individuals. We will start on page forty, corporation council salaries. Page forty.
Thank you.
There has been contractual raises to corporation councils' office budget. So that is in line with everything else. We have our telephone expenses, which are assigned to us as part of the city network. We have our maintenance agreements and dues and subscriptions. And those are our agreements with LexisNexis for legal research services, as well as our printer services, as well as legal journals and legal books that we have to update periodically. We have a court fees filing budget in here. Usually that is under $1,500 or $1,000. I'm pretty proud of our departments. We haven't had that much litigation the last three years. Travel and education, we have that amount in the request in there. As you can tell, we are usually always under budget because as far as our travel goes, we don't really have to do much, you know, apart from going to Buffalo for federal court matters and periodic trips to Albany, which I have not had to do since March. Stationery and office supplies, that's not a bad one. We do send out a lot of letters, usually denying claims or answering email inquiries. I provided a case list. I will work on that some more and I'm hopeful that we can discuss some of those cases as we go forward. And that is the general corporation council's budget on page forty. And also note that we do have contracts that we manage, sometimes periodically come due, that aren't included as part of our budget. However, we bring those to the council, specifically our HR trains, the dog kennel contract, and our EAP services, which are not up this year. And then directing your attention to page sixty. I also manage the claims budget. And the claims budget is how much we pay out if we are settling cases or if we are litigating cases. We previously ask around $90,000 to $100,000. You know, this year, we've been fortunate, as we were in past years, we've used about $67,000 in the claims budget as of last week. The majority of that being on the case of royal housing that we settled. I'll be asking for another recommendation on what to do on another case, but I don't think the council will settle that case in the coming future. So I've kept that all the same. And directing your attention to page seventy-three, I also manage the parking attendants. And there have been no changes other than the CSEA contractual raises. And that is it. There are no questions. I'm sure there'll be questions regarding the case list. I'll send email that out to council.
That's us?
Yeah. You only have two prosecutors?
Yes.
Yes, but evading that we have more since they're still fishing at their jobs.
I know I made this suggestion last year and I'm going to make it again. In this budget book, I would much rather see, if we only have so much space, 2020 actual go away in 2023 year-to-date. Because it's hard to see where people are and you're comparing multiple documents if you don't have that information from here. Anybody have any other questions for today? Okay. That is it for budget, I guess. Unless there was something else under miscellaneous that you were thinking? Okay. I wasn't aware of any, but that doesn't mean anything. Okay, that's it for the budget for today.
So the next, we're not meeting next week. So we should be. Probably. Forty-seven.
I don't have this guy moving.
Police and fire, I believe.
Police and fire on the subway?
Yeah.
Six-thirty.
Yes.
And then should the department have management after that? And then all the other library, Fenton, and stuff like that, a little stuff.
Library, Fenton's.
Thank you very much.